Try adjusting.
I just got emailed from my daughter, he's like, I don't know who's covering the one hundred and eleven. But there's a contract. I was like, I don't know either.
Hey George, are you able to hear us okay?
I do not.
Yes, yes, I can.
Awesome, thank you.
Oh, here's the contract that I actually got. So we have been keeping up with Union College. This is probably the first time I've ever seen a college. Actually speaking of which, the dairy parade, yeah, the dairy parade was just in the county.
So if I'm referring to us as a. As a village board, is it the village board of trustees of the village of Scotia? And that includes you as well?
The dairy parade that we need in the fourth. Yeah, and then. Three bills. So that's the, that's how we end it. Yeah, they have.
Nobody else.
Yeah, so it was funny because the other day. Maybe they would have, you know, someone that won't run because they're out. I just put this authorized to. So I received it as a.
Closing documents.
I was like, I don't know.
Yes.
You ready, Justin?
Yes.
You read it?
Yes.
Each day. Okay, so it's a minute after seven by my watch. Let's start the meeting of the June eighth, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting of the village board of trustees. And we'll start with the pledge.
Pledge legally. Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we will, let's have a moment of silence. We had a. Former fireman died last week, Paul Grippo, lived on Mohawk Avenue for a long time. He was a firefighter a long time ago because I don't remember him being a, being a fireman. And I've been doing it for forty-two years. So anyway, Paul Grippo.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Click color roll.
Here.
Here.
Yes, here.
And trustee Rizzo and Gray are excused. I have number three privilege of the floor. Is anybody would like to be heard at privilege of the floor? Anybody? Okay, let's close privilege of the floor. Item four. Oh, mass gathering permit for jumping jacks. For the fireworks for Friday, July first, welcome back. Let's see. Justin, do you want to make the motion? I heard you. Do you need this?
So it is my, my privilege to make a motion to approve the mass gathering permit for the jumping jacks drive-in, which was sponsoring the fourth annual or the annual Fourth of July fireworks in Collins Park. And thank the owner of jumping jacks as well as all the employees for sponsoring this event and really making it the annual gathering that everyone looks forward to, especially this year after a long two years of COVID. So.
George, just wait a second.
A second.
All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Post. Item number five. Justin, would you like to?
Thanks.
Would you like to introduce local odd twenty twenty-two C?
I most certainly would, after almost a year.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but the, um, the motion has twenty twenty-one C on it on the top of it, just for the record.
Okay, we'll fix it. Um, it is my privilege after a year of working with Ollie and Sheila, two now sixth graders or soon to be sixth graders here in the village of Scotia to change and amend the village of Scotia code to allow for skateboarding in the village, but recognizing that skateboarding comes a certain hazard. So we're adopting safe skate guidelines that align with other municipalities in upstate New York and throughout New York, also adopting and really enforcing New York State vehicle traffic safety law. So it is my pleasure to, to introduce this amendment regarding encumbrances on streets and sidewalks as it relates to skateboards and to set a public hearing for the next regular meeting of the board of trustees, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two at seven PM.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I. Post. All right. Nice work, Justin.
Thank you to the board for supporting this.
Item number six. Have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of agreement with the PBA regarding part-time patrol officers.
I'd like to make a motion for, to authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of agreement with the Scotia PBA regarding part-time patrol officers.
A second.
All in favor?
I.
I. Post. Item number six, have a resolution to approve the thirteen thousand sixty dollars use of ARPA funds for Skoharry River youth programs. This, since we did this, will, we have a verbal agreement, which I need to get a written agreement with the town. But they are willing to go in with us per capita, so we won't likely be spending nearly that much. But I'd like to, I'd like to have that in the motion now so that we can contract with Skoharry River, get them going with the advertising, get them going with the, you know, telling the schools and stuff before it's too late.
Yeah, I mean, my, my only concern with this is just that it's already late. The end of school is next week.
It's late, but I think people are really gonna like it.
I think so too. It's a great, it, it is a great program and, and I do want this to be contingent upon partnership with the town of Glenville. I, I think that's important because especially if town residents are gonna have access to this, the town needs to also be able to contribute to this as well.
Yeah, I don't, if, if you can, don't make it contingent because that the, we can still go on our own if we have to, you know, and just have Scotia people in it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve thirteen thousand sixty dollars for use of our refunds for Skoharry River Youth Program.
I will second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I.
Okay, item number eight, moving right along. We have a a deal with Stewart's to trade our police parking lot for one over here, which they are almost done improving. They've done a pretty impressive job so far. We need to finalize the legal paperwork and so that's what this is all about. We have a motion to do what Lydia said.
I'll make a motion to finalize the land swap with Stewart's shop for.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I.
I. Post. Item number nine, we have a motion to authorize payment number eight to precision industrial maintenance in the amount of ninety-one thousand seven sixty-three eighty-five for wastewater pump station project contract number one, waste removal and disposal.
I'll make a motion to authorize mayor to sign the contract for the wastewater treatment plant project.
Authorize the payment. Yeah.
Yeah, because it's already been planned for and budgeted for, so I'll second.
And disposed of. All in favor?
I.
All right.
Post. Item ten, can we have a resolution to establish summer hours for the village employees?
I'd like to make a motion to establish summer hours for village employees here in the village of Scotia.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Bye.
I.
Post. Item eleven, mayor's comments to the board. So first and foremost, thanks to everybody who helped out in the referendum. Our clerk's office staff particularly were amazing and I'm just so relieved that we could get this passed and get the project on the way. And just thanks to everybody. The docs went in this week. All right. Congratulations to our crack crew. They're, and while they're doing that, they're also fixing water leak across town. I mean, it's just ambidextrous. So I made myself a nuisance to them yesterday, watching the, this, them dig out a hydrant on Glen Avenue, but it was just, just so fascinating because they're so good. Oh. They, they didn't push me into the pit, so I think I was okay, but anyway. I think that'll, that's, the things are looking up for the village. Item twelve, correspondence liaison, Justin.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll start first with the Scotia Business Improvement District. A lot of the businesses are busy in preparation for the car show on Father's Day weekend. It is a, a longstanding tradition here in the village and it brings a lot of visitors, both from within the town, Schenectady County, but also across New York State. And it really helps and supports our village businesses there. So I know they're preparing. You know, they're just outside of the bid, you'll notice Luna's Pizzeria is actually opened up on the corner of Fifth and Fifty. They're actually actively hiring kitchen staff, pizza cooks, first line cooks. So there is a good opportunity for folks to, to work within our, our walkable village. I'm also happy to say that the bid will be growing by yet another business. A bakery is set to open in the old storied coffee location. They are set to open in the fall of twenty twenty-two. I do know that village residents have been asking for a bakery for so long and this is great. I also am, am happy to report that All In Aesthetics, who was unfortunately displaced from their current location due to the Stewart's expansion, has found a new home in the old, the, the building next to Gauge Realty. I can't remember the name Mohawk Ave, but she is actually undergoing significant renovation to make, to make that, that space suitable for her growing business. I'm, I'm very happy to, to have her stay within the village. And I've, I've been keeping in as, as regular conversations with her as I, as I possibly can. I am, I am set to do another, another follow-up with her, but to the community, please be sure to, to reach out to Beth and, and show her, show her your support, especially when she reopens. You know, I, I do want to again, really push the village board to consider allocating the fifty thousand dollars for small business grants. You know, this is something we've been talking about regularly. You know, any assistance that the board can have, this is, I think, a huge priority and it's unanimously supported, you know, by, by the village board. So I'd like to, to continue to move forward with that, using the recommendations from Lydia on structuring that. So that's also, you know, obviously the Fourth of July fireworks. I do want to recognize and, and really encourage the village to reach out and find ways to support jumping jacks in this Fourth of July celebration. I want to make the public know that jumping jacks pays for a hundred, currently pays for a hundred percent of that event, from the fireworks to the public safety security, to also the New York State troopers, the sheriff, the sheriff patrol, that's all paid for by jumping jacks and the porta potties. So I do think the village of Scotia, knowing that this attracts, well, close to probably three thousand people into our area, that we find a way to support this small business by either waiving some of our public safety fees or collab, finding ways to help subsidize this, to, to ease the burden on, on jumping jacks. Without sacrificing public safety. So with that said, I also want to thank the parade committee for their work. I know many, many members of the bid were involved in that. And, you know, also bid businesses benefited from having the, the traffic down on, on Mohawk Ave. It was great to have the parade back. So thank you to all the volunteers who stepped up to really make that possible. I don't have anything to report from the zoning board of appeals. The, as the police liaison, I, I have to say, I'm, I'm continually impressed by our, our department's commitment to really enacting and following through on community policing. We have selected our community resource officer who will be active in really establishing our community policing presence, both in, in the schools, in our parks, and in our neighborhoods. Officer Michael Peckham, a Scoti native, has been selected to be the department's CRO officer. Our, our police chief has set him up with the appropriate training that is required of a school resource officer and a community resource officer. He will attend basic school in July and we anticipate having a ceremony for the new position in August, at the August board meeting. You know, this is, this is a critical part of our law enforcement, our law enforcement reform and police accountability committee. And I let it be known, Officer Peckham was also very supportive initially and early on with supporting our two young students in revising village code to finally allow for skateboarding. So thank you for that. The, the Scotia Police Department was also on hand to provide planning for Memorial, the Memorial Day Parade. And we also have Officer Falkowitz, our new officer, going through DCGS field training at Zone Five. Again, be it known that he's actually a leader in his class.
Right.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Wrong, wrong officer. My apologies. So another, another another element to, again, how committed our officers are to de-escalation, but also focusing on handling juvenile incidents with care. There, we did have an incident with what's called a splatter gun. It's a, it's a type of toy gun that actually shoots gelatin balls and leaves welts. Our officers were there to respond quickly and were able to identify the officers and provide the necessary referrals for the parents to help make sure that a situation like this doesn't happen again. So thank you to Sergeant Coke, Sergeant Brady and Officer Peckham for handling that juvenile incident with, with incredible care. In terms of another part of our community, community policing efforts, we received a, a letter from a village resident and I'd, I'd like to read it as part of this report. This email serves as an appreciation and thank you to Officer Michael Spalding for his professionalism, caring and outstanding work in the handle of my identity theft issue last week. He listened to made out a police report on the incident which caused a lot of anxiety and stress to me and took time to deliver my report to my house personally and to ascertain if any additions needed to be made. We discussed identity theft as possible ways to prevent it from happening again, and I found Officer Spalding to be a meticulous personable and a credit to the Scotia Police Department. The village of Scotia should be proud of officers such as Officer Spalding. I just wanted to convey my sincere thanks and appreciation for his assistance. So that is all I have for my police report.
Thank you. Before I go to George, there's, we have a, our garage sale was, village-wide garage sale was last week. And Lynn had a medical emergency yesterday and can't make it tonight, but she did a fabulous job with the, with getting that lined up. As she said in a report that says the village-wide garage sale was a great success this year. Weather was absolutely perfect. Over a hundred families participated. Several of the churches opened their spaces to multiple families. We raised over one thousand fifty dollars for Scotia Relief Fund. Thank you to the Scotia Police for helping with traffic and putting up park, no parking signs. And to the clerk's office for helping with registration and printing and DPW for dropping off signs to me. So thank you, Lynn, and thanks to everybody. George, you got the report?
Um, it's gonna be brief for sure. Just, again, I want to mirror the statements of thanking the village for supporting our village facilities project. It's, uh, was, been a long, I was, it's been a long road and I feel confident that we presented a, a good project to the village as best we can. And I look forward to being involved in it moving, moving forward as we develop the, the program and, and the plan for the, the buildings to serve the village residents and provide safe workspaces for our employees and our first responders. So again, thank you to the village and it's, uh, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a really great thing for the village. It was great to participate in the Memorial Day Parade. I always get, I always get a bunch of feels when I'm standing there. It's a, it's a great time to reflect on the freedoms that we have been provided by by our military personnel and our first responders. It's a, it's not lost on me, the sacrifices that have been made for, for our freedoms. And I hope there's a way that we can, as as the elder representation, give, are able to convey that, that level of feeling and that level of respect that our young people should have for honoring the things, honoring the people who have allowed us to have the freedoms we have. So it's a, it's a, one of those days that I have a lot of feels. So it was, it was very, I was very pleased to be able to participate and it's great to see all the faces again along the street. So. And other than that, looking forward to the Fourth of July, looking forward to the car show, looking forward to seeing the docks on the, on the water again. And thank you to everybody. So thanks.
Thank you, George. Okay, item fourteen, budget adjustments.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the, to make the necessary budget adjustments for the month of June, May, of the May.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I.
Item fifteen, we have a motion to pay the bills. Oh, I'm sorry.
I make a motion to accept the departmental reports for the month of May.
Thank you. Second, Justin?
I will second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I.
Okay, item fifteen, audit of claims.
Like to make a motion to accept the audit of claims.
Pay the bills.
And pay the bills.
George, okay, all in favor? Hi. Item sixteen, new business. I believe Justin may have something.
Yes, um, last week, the board voted to fly the pride flag on the side of Village Hall for the month of June. And also I want to thank the mayor and George for agreeing to issue a proclamation declaring June twenty twenty as pride month in the village of Scotia, twenty twenty-two in the village of Scotia. So if I may have just a few moments to read a proclamation in honor of pride month. Whereas our nation was founded on the principle of equal rights for all people, but the fulfillment of this promise continues to be a work in progress. And whereas the village of Scotia strives to be a community that embraces people of. And whereas the village of Scotia strives to be a community that embraces people of all races, creeds, colors, backgrounds, sexual orientations and gender identities. And whereas all residents of Scotia should be able to live without fear of prejudice, discrimination, violence, or hatred based upon race, ethnicity, religion, class, gender identity, sexual orientation, age, mental or physical ability, and supported by their peers, educators, and community leaders. And whereas the village of Scotia respects and supports, supports the rights of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, questioning plus people to live their lives authentically, free from discrimination, harassment, and violence. And whereas the village of Scotia recognizes the unique and positive contributions the L G B T Q plus our L G B T Q plus neighbors make to our community. And whereas June has become nationally recognized moment to celebrate and honor the way the L G B T Q Americans have overcome adversity and enriched our society. And whereas village residents in the broader Schenectady County community observes Pride Month with the flying of pride flags, parades, cultural events, and educational activities to mark, to mark the major advancements in equal rights, freedom, and justice for the L G B T Q plus community. And whereas the village of Scotia celebrates Pride Month by flying, by flying the pride flag on Village Hall and affirming its commitments to performing inclusive marriages and supporting L G B T Q plus families in in our neighborhoods. Now thereof, we, the village board of trustees of the village of Scotia hereby proclaim June twenty twenty-two as L G B T Q plus Pride Month in the village of Scotia. Given under our hand and the seal of the village of Scotia at Village Hall in the village of Scotia in the town of Glenville this eighth day of June in the year two thousand twenty-two.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay, thank you.
And if I may, thank, thank the board for the, for allowing the flag to be flown.
No problem. And and we also thank Mr. Putman for not coming yesterday, because our election was not that close and we didn't want any hanging chats. Anyway. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, everybody. All right, how is that, Mario? Did it go all right? Okay.